All right, I will call us to order. That was very loud. I gotta move back a little bit. Welcome to our study session today. The agenda is slightly different. We don't usually have public comment periods in study sessions, but I wanted to make sure, given that our previous public comment period at the board meeting happened before the presentation on the federal and state funding that we talked about before, I know that's garnered some media coverage and emails to us as board members and people rightfully have strong feelings. So I wanted to provide an opportunity, as this is the next meeting that we had, for people to share their thoughts or their feedback. Of course, your public comments do not have to be on those topics. You can do whatever you want, but just by way of explanation for why there's a public comment period at a study session, which is not our usual practice, and then there will be another one at our regular board meeting for October. So I have three people that I know of that are signed up for this comment period. If anybody else wants to, you've still got a little time, fill out your comment, public comment card over there and get it to me. The first one is Eric Aldrich. Is Eric here? Please.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us have comments tonight. And it's exciting that we're talking about Pima online. As long as I've been with Pima, I have been working with Pima online. Actually, I started teaching online at Arizona State in 2007. I received some really great online teaching instruction. And through my years at Pima, I've also professionalized in online in a number of ways. And one of those ways was getting an instructional design certificate as an associate instructional designer here at the college. And in addition to being English faculty, I also work in the Office of Quality Assurance, and I assist my fellow faculty with instructional design tasks, which gives me a pretty unique view on online instruction. But I don't just help with online, I help with all modalities, but I tend to see online pretty frequently. And so I get two different views, right? There's people who kind of maybe really excel in online, they love it, they professionalized in it. There's been lots of professional opportunities for people at the college over the years to professionalize in online. And then there are some folks that aren't as professionalized in online instruction. And my comment really comes down to, it would really be great if we could leverage those of us, like my colleagues here who have come tonight, who love online, who have spent years professionalizing in online, and have great knowledge and ability and skill. If there was a way to leverage us, to bring our abilities to bear on our online programs, that would be great. And there are some ways that we sort of do this informally throughout the college, but generally speaking, online is just distributed throughout all faculty. People can choose to teach online, or they can choose to teach on a campus. The difference there is that when you get hired, you just assume that you know how to teach on a campus, right? Like, everybody teaches in a classroom, somebody gives you a textbook. It's not a piece of high technology, you can give the quiz out of the back of the chapter if you have to. It's not that as difficult as learning the learning management system, like learning D2L. For those of us who have learned D2L extensively, it's a very different landscape once you start actually teaching online. And so you'll probably see some success rates and completion rates and retention rate differences in the slideshow that you will review this evening. So what we need to understand is that those differences don't exist for all of us. I don't see those differences in my classes. I don't see those, I'm sure a lot of these folks don't see those differences in their classes either. Because the more that you professionalize in online, the more that that gap between success shrinks. So there are ways that we could, we could leverage folks who really have professionalized deeply in teaching online. One of those ways would be to allocate some of us to an online campus. We don't have to be attached to a physical campus. Some of us could, if our expertise, our abilities, and our interests primarily align with online, it would be great if we could consider making online a campus that faculty could be allocated to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask questions? Eric, do, does Pima still?
Hang on. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is public comment, it's not, although, I mean, it is an agendized item, so you can have some level.
I just want to ask a question that I wasn't sure when he was speaking. Do we still do the teach, build, and lead classes that you have to take in order to teach online?
Those still exist, but with the Pima online reorganization that happened in the 23-24 year, whether they are enforced evenly by division is no longer clear. When it was centralized as Pima online with a clear structure, yes, that was the case. I know those things still exist, and on paper, people are supposed to go through them. There's people over here who can answer that question better than me, but to my understanding, that's a little bit unclear at this point. But again, someone else will be able to answer that better. Thank you.
Okay. We'll make sure we hit that when our presentations come up too. All right, Dr. Kelly O'Keefe. Newly minted Dr. Kelly O'Keefe.
Wow, this is a fancy public comment. A bit shorter there. Good evening, Board Chair Taylor and the rest of the members of the governing board, and of course, all of my esteemed colleagues and some guests. My name is Kelly O'Keefe. I am the Department Head for Health Information Technology. I've been full-time faculty with Pima since 2013, and absolutely love it. I started teaching in-person, and as we progressed with our program and our program started to grow, our attendance started to shrink. And that doesn't usually make sense, right? So I started asking the students, why are you not coming to class? Is it because you don't like the lectures? Are you not feeling like you're having some, you know, interactivity with your colleague students, you know, like, all of your classmates here, you know, is it not beneficial? And they're said, oh, we really love it, but we want to work from our home. Okay? In HIT, most of the positions are remote positions in our industry. So we decided we were going to test that, and we made all of our classes available online. Pretty soon, all of our classes online were enrolled in, and maybe three or four students wanted the in-person classes or the hybrid classes. Okay? So lo and behold, we joined Pima online at that time was our division, and our entire program became online. Very good program now. We're almost to 400 students just in medical billing and coding and HIT alone, and that's not including our fast-track students, which is growing exponentially. Our enrollment is over 1,000, and that's gone up, I don't even know how, a couple hundred percent, right? So we're showing great success with online classes. Just to give you a little background, and I'm gonna make it quick, because I know I'm on time here, but my research that I just completed, as Chair Taylor mentioned, was all about online student success, and their perceptions going into online learning, and whether they felt they were going to be successful even before they started. I'm also a part of the committee that's undergoing the restructuring of the onboarding process, part of the Connect U orientation, the orientation to online learning, et cetera, for our students who need to or either elect to learn online and get their degree here. So part of my research really has led us to know more at Pima about our students and how they are putting together their information online and going into industry, as well as how they're becoming successful in our classes. We're able to improve upon our courses. We work with people like Eric, you just heard from, instructional designers. We are subject matter experts, and we develop our courses specifically for our industry, and they're very, very successful. And I will go ahead and conclude there. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, thank you.
And our final public comment is Michaela Hayes. And if anybody else wants to fill out a card, you have till Michaela's done to hand it to me, then we'll move on to the next thing.
Good evening, Michaela Hayes. Coming to you as math faculty tonight, and also was a co-associate instructional designer with Eric when he did his year. I did a year as an instructional designer for Pima online. I just wanted to share that I started teaching online, I think my first year at Pima, and I've watched it grow. And it's been such an interesting experience watching us wrestle with having it all at the division level, and then bringing it into Pima online, and then building up the Center for Learning Technology, and bringing on onboard technology experts, and building our own instructional designers. It's been such a cool process to watch us grow. Last year, or I guess it's been two years now, while I was an instructional designer, I was able to go to the ITC conferences, the International Technology Council. There was a group of people from Pima online that went, several won awards, everybody presented, like, not everybody, I did not. I think I was the one person who didn't present, I just went to go learn what we were doing. And I just have to say, I was so impressed with the way that all of the conversations in every single room that we had, nothing was new to me as a Pima employee. There were people struggling with so many details of, how do we do this? I don't think our faculty will get on board with that. How do we make our faculty do this thing? And everybody, in every one of those conversations, it was like, Pima's already got that covered. We did that 10 years ago, we got that five years ago, we don't have an issue with that faculty, just do it. We work with it. They're all onboard for student success. And it was really, really neat to be in that space at a conference for learning online, and realize that Pima really is a leader in the online education space. We have a lot of stuff we still want to figure out, but we are doing a really good job in that education space, and I am proud of the work that we've done. I think, you know, one of the things that I experienced as an online student is sometimes you get in there and you're like, wow, this class is such busy work. Like, I don't want to do this as a student. And I have not had that experience, like, with, as people are designing their courses, as I'm an instructional designer, people are really thinking intentionally about how students are going to learn as they interact with things, and really purposefully making research-based, evidence-based decisions on the interactions that they have with their students, and continuously improving those through common conversations. And it's been an amazing conversation to have with our students, I'm sorry, with our faculty. I also, as a math faculty, have been involved in some of the math initiatives that we've had for dev ed, including teaching synchronous sessions with our asynchronous dev ed classes, and having those students show up and have that personal interaction, and then hopefully you'll hear some more about those things. But I just wanted to say, Pima online has, really is, has established itself as a leader nationally. So, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. I got two more while you were speaking. You were all so inspirational. Is it Bardo Padilla? Is that the first name? Okay. If I mispronounce that, forgive me.
It's perfectly correct. Good evening, members of the board. This is probably my second time that I come up and spoken in front of, in front of the board, but I just want to say, I'm a, I'm a full-time faculty, and been with Pima for 20 years now, teaching, and teaching is my passion. And I really find Pima a place where we can actually explore and develop all kinds of modalities and all kinds of opportunities for our students and our communities. And I think Pima online is giving that opportunity. Speaking from the second language learning experience and teaching Spanish as a second language, at the beginning, we were having a lot of issues, having our students being able to produce the language. And I'm sure that some other subject areas have had the same issues, but in learning a language, we must have that speaking component. And we felt that we were not achieving that through online teaching. So I think online teaching has given us the opportunity to grow as faculty members, as individuals as well. And with everything that is being developed, we also are incorporating these new tools. So finally, we decided, okay, we're gonna become more involved into our online teaching, and how can we help our students achieve the different, the different skills that they have to learn when they're learning a second language? So finally, or, you know, we are developing some sort of AI where our students can actually speak to someone and get feedback during online learning. So I think that online is giving us the opportunity to develop that, as well as our students, to get involved and get really active with what is coming up, you know, with technology. So it is an opportunity for us to learn as faculty members, but also for students to learn, not just the subject area, but what technology offers. And, you know, once they get into the field or out there, they're gonna be familiar with what's going on through our courses. So I think Pima online gives that opportunity for students. We're also creating videos, creating tips for students to be able to get what they're not getting, you know, from the classroom, online. We're creating videos for tips and resources that students might have at Pima, counseling sessions. So I think that it opens up another field that we had not explored before, at least in our department. You know, Pima online has given us that opportunity in that modality. So that's all I have, and thank you for your time, and I hope that, you know, it makes a difference in making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. All right, our last speaker, and forgive me if I mispronounce part of this one, it's Kim Lisa Salazar Duce, Duce Sella, there we go.
Board Chair Taylor, members of the board, Chancellor Nassi up there in the corner, peers and colleagues. My name is Kim Lisa Salazar Duce Sella, and I have been at Pima, I came in with Bardo. So 21 years, I think, Bardo. And I am one of the founding members of Pima online. I started teaching online before online was cool, going all the way back to some of our earlier instructors back in the community campus days. I have seen online evolve from the time that, in fact, I started in the California system online. I know online. I have my certification in instruction with AI, and I'm finishing up my instructional design through university. I am, I'm very knowledgeable, I am a history faculty, and I know the history of online. And the things that we do today are very different than the things that we did with online even five years ago, even two years ago. AI changed it all. So to teach online today is very different than teaching online, say, 10 years ago or five years ago. And it requires a certain amount of expertise, and it requires a certain amount of design to have a good online class, and you're going to see some parts of mine tonight, I believe. You really need to have that cooperation between an entire team. And the thing to always, always keep in mind are the students. I think Eric made some very good points about leveraging those faculty that are very, very good at online. I do not see the difference in the success rates in my courses. I was the Department Head for Social Sciences for years, and I worked very hard to close those gaps. But there's always going to be a gap with online. And the reason that there's always going to be a gap on online is because our students are different. They have, they suffer for something we call time poverty. If you choose to be in an online class, there's a variety of reasons that they do it. I don't know if Pima has asked our students why they choose online. I can't speak to that. But many of them take online for a variety of reasons. They don't have time, they're working 40 hours a week, they really want to do this, they've got kids. My own daughter was at Pima online and finished a degree here while it was a certificate, and now she's at ASU online. She has a young boy. She cannot go to campus. So the point of all of this, and I think of what the faculty are trying to say to you, is that we are your experts, and we want to talk to you about online. And we have some amazing students, and we have students that struggle, just like everyone else. But it's incumbent upon this college, I believe, and I'm speaking for myself, to deliver online courses to our students when they need them, where they need them. And that should be our role, to think of our students every single time in everything we do. And so they voted with their feet, and we should pay attention to that.
Thank you. All right, maybe, maybe final? Liz Rangel Arriola.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Liz Rangel Arriola. I am a Spanish faculty, along with my colleague, Bardo Padilla. I'm also Department Head for Online World Languages, French, Spanish, and German. I've also been an instructional designer, an associate instructional designer, trained with the Center for Learning Technology. I've been a co-creator of seven, six of our seven Spanish courses. I've been a Pima online student, I've been an online student at other institutions, so I feel I can see these courses from so many different perspectives. I've been teaching online since 2013, and since then, I've learned a lot about our students. And to Kim Lisa's point, our students who are online don't always choose online. It is really the only path they have to access higher education, helping us fulfill our mission to support every learner everywhere. Just last week, I had a student that said she's now seeking to transfer, she's very excited, but she says that she's not sure what she's gonna study, because she has to find a place that will help her get to her bachelor's that's fully online, because she works a full-time job. And that's a non-negotiable for her, because that's how she supports herself. Another student last semester, when she logged into her oral exam, she was in full military attire at her desk and said, I'm sorry, this is the only time I can take this exam, because I have a little kid at home. I spend those three hours before she goes to bed with her, and then I do my homework. So to do her exam, that was the only time she had. So our work as online instructors is so important. I want to share a little bit about what we're doing in Spanish, because I'm just so proud of the work that Bardo started mentioning. I don't know if you know about language instruction, but we have to assess and support our students with reading, writing, listening, speaking, and culture. And we have to develop all of that in an asynchronous environment. So somehow, we have to have conversations that are asynchronous with students. That creates challenges for us, and we have been very innovative in trying to figure out, how are we gonna support our students? We have been able to go from a $150 textbook to a low-cost $30 resources, and now to zero cost. But that has required a huge support from the CLT. And we'd love to continue developing more of our courses this way, but we know that we need a lot more instructional design to make sure that our courses are high-quality, accessible, and done in the way that best support our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, for reals this time, I think this might be the last one. Brooke Anderson. Brooke Anderson.
My name is Brooke Anderson. I'm a writing faculty member at Pima Community College. I'm also the department head that oversees some of our online courses, as well as our dual enrollment for writing. And I'm also the vice president for our faculty union, PCCEA. So I wanted to speak just to, I know that one of the things that concerns all of us in this room is the success of our dev ed students, and that dev ed students struggle with online courses. But I want to ask the board to trust our students, like many of the, of the faculty that spoke before me mentioned, that they are choosing these classes for important reasons that make education more accessible to them, and that there's so many fabulous advancements in our online education. I'm so proud to be a part of Pima Online, as many of the faculty who are here today are also. So I want to ask them to stand, just so you can kind of see how many of us showed up today because you were talking about this. And so that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, all of you, for your, your work and, and your time with us tonight and all of your, your comments. We really appreciate it. I guess I should have mentioned before that Dr. Nasi is joining us, but he's appearing like a Bond villain up on the screens up here, as he had a important family commitment that took him back east. So it is very late where he is, so thank you for joining us, Dr. Nasi, I appreciate it. And with that, I will call up, yep, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just said, thank you.
Oh, great. And with that, I'll call up Dr. Rourke. You want to get us started with 3.1, online learning.
Good evening, Board Chair Taylor, Board Vice Chair Renal Morales, board members, Chancellor Nasi on that screen, and guests, and to all of the guests that came tonight. I can't fully turn around or else I lose, like, some of the microphone. But I want to thank you for also coming and expressing your viewpoints, perspectives, and, and potential concerns. And I'm thinking, I was visiting with Michael as we were listening, we weren't, we weren't paying attention. I think we address almost every point that was brought up in, in the conversations during open, open comment, but if not, we can certainly close any gaps either this evening or, or moving forward. Just as a point of clarification for my team and I, we, just because of the time, we want to, we, we practiced for an hour each, including around 15 minutes of questions. Do we need to adapt?
I think we'll just keep going. We can go, I don't think seven o'clock's like a hard stop time, but yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So the, the predominant speakers for this portion of the board study session are going to be our chief online learning officer, Michael Amick, who I had the privilege of officeing next to when we were at the community campus in 2015. We were hired just within months, months of each other, so I've known Michael for over a decade, as well as Kate Schmidt, who also was officeing in the same area, who is now our assistant vice, our assistant vice chancellor of academic resources and services. But I'm going to go ahead and just open us up with one, one piece of information that I think everybody should know that in advance of this meeting. Anthony Sovak, I'm going to get your title wrong, so please correct me, but you are the Director of Learning Management Service Systems and E-Quality.
Close enough.
Close enough. Has recently been published in an article that we, that really spoke to us on the academic leadership team around the value of Pima Online, but also how all things are becoming more online and digital. So you have received, in advance of this meeting, a copy of his article. And just so everybody knows the title of the article, this is not just online, why every student is a digital learner, and that is published in the Journal of Educational Technology Insights. So great job, Tony and team, in representing Pima Online and Pima Community College with respect to how we are still continuing to make an impact. I do want to reiterate from myself, as well as the chancellor who was also texting me, that we value Pima Online. We value the strength and access that online learning holds for our community, for our students who need that flexibility, as well as the work that has been done in the past through Pima Online, and we will continue to build on that strong foundation moving forward as we look at improving teaching and learning for all of our students. And we will talk about what, you know, in the course of this presentation, why that article is actually really keen and germane to this discussion. So again, online learning and overview, we're going to be going over some data and the strategies for online learner success, as well as how that is informing all learner success, particularly around the scaling up and implementation of our learning management system, which is D2L Brightspace. And the, the, the reality that that's really something that all of our learners are going to be utilizing is a part of their academic and educational journey, and how the work that's being done in Pima Online is now going to be used to infuse that quality throughout all of instruction. The evolution of online learning, Michael will give an overview of where, where we are with respect to Pima Online. Of course, expanding access and opportunity online, just really a clear picture of what this means for our students and our community, particularly the working learners in our community. Some online learner data, and perhaps context and perspective around those data. And then also initiatives and practices for online success and innovation, including our e-campus concept, which we are very excited about. And then finally, we also are going to have Kate talk a little bit about, well, shift from Michael to Kate, to really tee us up on how academic resources and services, how the Teaching Learning Center is working with the CLT to strengthen, over time, our academic regimen, and particularly the utilization of our digital tools, as more of our students are becoming online, and more of our students, even in other courses, are utilizing online tools and services in, in a hybridized environment. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Amick, who is our chief online learning officer. Michael.
Good evening, chancellor. Glad you could be with us and board chair, board members, and community. I'm Michael Amick, and I'm glad to be with you this evening. And so we'll just get right into it, talking a little bit about how online learning has flowed with the enrollment here at the institution. This is going all the way back to 2010. I started here in 2015, and the observation at that time was that online learning made up about 19% of the college's enrollment. And prior to that, and really up until about 2018, it moved up and down with the enrollment of the college. So if the college grew, online grew, the college turned down, so did online learning. But in 2018, we started to see a departure from that, and right prior to going into the pandemic, online learning had shifted to 29% of the institution. And now we see, coming out of the pandemic, we are running at about 45% of the college's enrollment is online learning. This is a tremendous shift, tremendous experience of just the bulk of online learning taking place with our students. This is a national phenomenon. The community colleges across the nation are reporting 50% of their enrollment is online and persisting that way after the pandemic. And so these conversations that we having, are having are not new or different than what other institutions are exploring. And we're going to get into some of the data as well about seeing the shift in our learners that are exclusively online, meaning that they're taking 100% of their courses in an online environment, and we'll be looking at some of their data as well. And then also some data that's just hot off the news release today. NC CERA issued a report. NC CERA is a national entity that brokers the, basically the reciprocity agreement for out-of-state enrollment for online learners. And I serve on the Arizona CERA council that helps approve Arizona institutions to accept out-of-state enrollment. Their report for the previous academic year was that there is 1.6 million online students that are exclusively online, and it's the highest number that they've ever reported nationally. And we'll keep going here with our slides and data. So at the institution here, we have a number of degrees and certificates that can be earned online. And so we also call out on this data point here that there are some of those programs that can only be earned online, and Dr. Kelly O'Keefe was referencing one of those programs in her sharing. And so we are still wanting to have better data understanding here of exactly how many learners are in these programs that are exclusively online. And this starts to tease into some of the initiatives we have related to the e-campus concept, that at the time of admission, students would be able to indicate that they intend to be an online student, or intend to complete their program completely online. Okay, I think that's everything I needed to cover there. Oh, this is going to take multiple clicks here. All right. So already had a lot of our great faculty speak to this already as to why students need online. What I share is every time I interact with a student, I have a few little questions I want to ask them or dialogue with them, and I ask them if they have ever taken any online courses. They almost always say yes. And then the next question I ask them is why, and they always have a very specific reason. I have to because, dot, 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 some of the things that are listed here. I could not go to school. I could not access my education either completely or partially because of my schedule. And that's just the main thing that I think our takeaway here, right, is that this is about access to education, and without it being provided online, our students would not be able to achieve that credential. So this information comes from surveys that we do with a priority survey of online learners. It's a national survey, and here's what the students are telling us from that survey. Also wanted to share with you that STAR is in the process of launching a very short, simple survey to every single one of our online students this semester to ask them why they are taking it online, and if that was their preference. I shared with you that I asked this question to students, and we gave about hundreds and hundreds of comments as to what we're sharing here as to why. But occasionally, we do have a student that does share, I didn't want to take it online. I don't want to take it online, but it is my only option, sometimes because of their schedule, but sometimes because they couldn't get to where they needed to be at a campus of their choice or that was closest to them. So we do hear that on occasion as well. Going to continue with some of the data, especially related to success of what some folks were talking about. Already had some time to talk about this with the graph that we were showing, but also just getting that sense of the exclusively online headcount that we're talking about here. So that's unduplicated for the entire year. We do have approximately 6,000 students every semester that are 100% online and not coming to our campuses. They're always welcome to. But our accreditation with the HLC requires us to offer similar-to-like services that a student can achieve at a campus, needs to be provided online. And so we do have all these educational technologies in place to offer services and experiences to the online students, but we also find that the face-to-face students want access to those digital services and tools as well. So we do kind of flow all of this back and forth. Here's another visual to help you see just, again, what's happening with the volume of online learning. And again, as I mentioned, when we look at the number that is exclusively online, that's about 30%. And when we talk about this campus concept, that would place it about in between the size of West and Downtown Campus as an e-campus volume. Oh, I forgot a shout-out back on our slide that had that picture of the student. That is Anisha, and she, Kim Lisa told her story of why she needed access to online learning, and was really grateful that she allowed us to use her image there. But that is Kim Lisa's daughter, and she had a great story as to how online helped make her educational goals possible. Sorry about that. So again, like's been shared, in the past 10 years that I have been here, we have a strategic goal and initiatives based on moving these numbers always. And I'll get into some of the aspects of what we've done with that. What you can see here is the productive grade rates, and we've chosen to really focus on those that are 100% online, because as mentioned, online learners are a little bit less successful. Those that are 100% online are even less successful. And so we're always working on that and measuring that. And here you can see how, really, what that number between 2018 and 2024, how that's changed. That's about a 60% step forward in growth, which that scaling is another one of the challenges that we've had in bringing our initiatives and actions into something that's building so much, whereas in other areas of the institution, that's been in decline. So that's part of what we're looking at. I'll keep going through this, because we have each segment of the success rate. So here's persistence. Again, concerning that it is at 60.7% last year compared to 71%, about an 11% gap. As you go through this data, you see some of the changes. We're trying to understand the rhythms here, and especially calling out fall of '22 to '23. We're wondering if one of the reasons why this is here with such a dip is the institution experienced a fraudulent hit of financial aid fraud and fraudulent online students that was significant, and there's, this is, again, a national phenomenon, there's seek-out big targets of students, and a lot of our intent to break down barriers to get students an ease of access to our institution has made, made it vulnerable for us at that time. We're not sure if that's the exact reason why, but that's some of what we speculate And continuing with this data about retention, retention recall is if I was enrolled as a student in the fall, I enroll again in the next fall. And we continue to see the lower numbers here. We're starting to see some growth. We're excited, actually, to get our next set of numbers, because some of what I'll be sharing about is the strategies that, and resources that helped us come to bear on this volume of students was through our Strive Online Title V grant. We're just starting to get some of the data from that to really try to impact this data So we went over all this data that shows how online learning typically has a gap. As some of the folks here were sharing, that individual faculty do not always experience that. And in fact, we have entire areas of the college that have a higher success rate than face-to-face classes, and we see those listed on the left. But it's also critical for us to acknowledge that some of our highest areas of enrollment, like writing, biology, and mathematics, have a success gap. And let's even just pause for a moment about math. What, a lot of what we've been talking about in the provost leadership team is, and what Kate will be sharing about, is this comprehensive need to address not just the modality of online, but success for students in whatever modality that they're in, or supporting those faculty to that end. And so with math, that is one of our biggest concern areas. If we look at the 10 classes with the lowest success rates at our institution, eight of them are in mathematics. And so this is where we have the most significant amount of work to do. We've been excited about some of the things that we've gotten started with the grant that I'll, I'll have a chance to share about. The other aspect in thinking about this that goes back to our access of education, we asked this question, should we be offering this online if it has such a low success rate? And we try to look at that to say, like, well, if it wasn't online, how many students could come to a campus? How many would we lose to a competitor that charges five to 10 to 15 times the rate without the services that we have? And with this 12% gap, we still wouldn't have as many successful completers by doing some of those things. So our goal is to still work on this, and we have even folks in the audience that can speak to that with our math department heads and dean as well.
Would you explain what those percentages mean?
Yes. So on the left, it means the success rate for students in computer applications. So on the left, it means the success rate for students in computer applications. The ABC success rate is 11% higher in online than it is in face-to-face classes. And so on the right, we have the success rate in writing, for example, is 3.2% lower in online learning than it is in face-to-face classes. And the thing that I mentioned to Chancellor Nassi when it comes to this success gap is the institution that figures this out is going to win like some sort of amazing global prize, because I've been hitting my head against this one for, since 1997, and just all of the actions that we've taken have been so positive for students and faculty. But it's exasperating that we can't get it over the line, and we're still pushing towards that. We could spend a lot of time talking here about the comprehensive online quality actions that have taken place over the past 10 years, and again, some of our commentators shared some of those. But what I, how I would summarize this is what we have done in each one of these areas, with faculty, instructional design, our D-12 Bright Space area, is we have pursued the best practices and innovations of doing everything that we can for the success of the learner. And we've pursued it to such an end that it's been recognized nationally in each one of these areas. And I think I count about 10 or 12 people here that have had that national recognition for their high-quality instruction, or their innovative use of technology to support students. And Michaela was talking about that when going to a conference of people hearing what we do. One of the more recent aspects of Pima Online has been the online student success department, where we think about our sphere of influence. What can the faculty do? How can we build the course to be as clear, no confusion, consistency, drawing them through? That it's built, that every action in that course connects to an outcome that the student is supposed to walk away with, complete clarity about the design, that the learning management system is consistent in its experience. You know, we kind of focused on the course, but with online student success, we've tried to expand that sphere of influence. And we heard about the orientation to online learning in our success coaches, and some of really what gave us the impetus to apply for the grant is to focus on this area. And that also brings us to the grant really wanting to leverage us into our Pima Online e-campus. And an e-campus concept can be a little like, what is that? Where is that? Who is that? But what we hear from our students, and there is this large volume of them, is that they want a sense of belonging to Pima Community College. They want a sense of place, connection, and the e-campus is intended to provide that. And also what we hear from them is they want clarity of services. And so the main aspect of the e-campus is the student knows, "Oh, I'm an online learner. That's where I can go online to get access to everything that I need." We'll talk a little bit about that. Again, the Strive Online grant was helping us with resources to transition into that. It helped us expand our success coaches in those courses with the lowest success rate. And our early data is showing a 5% step forward in success and a 12% persistence rate. Anytime I get double digits forward on an initiative, I get really excited, because that is tough to move that needle. Part of what we're building through the grant resources is the Virtual Success Center that provides that clarity of services. And it's allowed us to explore some software that other institutions are reporting some incredible success data changes. And so I have a couple of them listed here. One is our Connect to Learn, Inscribe is the name of the company. And we just started this last spring semester, and those students that participated in it had a 50% success rate versus 30% that those that did not. And the software is kind of like a Discord channel, or a place for students to talk to each other and interact, and get that sense of connection, and get that sense of place. And again, hot off the presses, late Friday, a student in a math class posted, "I need some help. Hello, I hope I'm not the only one feeling this way, but I am lost with the factoring quadratic equations and expressions with a leading coefficient not equal to 1." I don't know what that means. I was an art teacher. But she's asking this question late on a Friday night, overwhelmed, stressed out. Typically what would happen with students, this is a cause for dropping the class. "I'm not going to do well. I don't know what to do. I can't figure this out." And they're out. That's what we see in online learning, the ease of drop. But she had four students reply to her, "Hey, this definitely can get a little confusing. I think using grouping is the easiest way to do it, and there's a bunch of equations here." One student posted a YouTube video, please try to view this, and how to factor these types of quadratics. It's the AC method. And another student said, "Hey, you're not the only one. There are so many methods, they can become one big confusion." And so this is what excites me so much about what the grant has allowed us to do, is a place where students can dialogue like this, and get connection, and get persistence forward, that their workflow doesn't get broken down. And so we're just getting some initial data on that. The other platform was peer mentoring, where again, other institutions that have a successful online student mentor and matched with a new-to-online-learning student are seeing dynamic impacts to their success and retention. And the company is really impressed with the number of mentors that we had sign up for the very first time. We don't have any data on that yet. And I need to tell you, what you already know, is that we are very concerned, of course, about the impacts. We have three years left on this grant. That is $1.8 million that will not come to the institution for us to pursue these strategies and understand them. And so we are using, hope to use, the no-cost extension for the remainder of the academic year to vet and explore these things, and continue dialogue with the institution about what works. And finally, in some of our discussion and preparation for this, what would be really ideal is if we could tour you through some online courses. And we don't have time to do that tonight. And so when Chancellor Nassi started here, we did do that. We took the time to tour him through some online courses, and Dr. Rourke, I believe, just had a tour last week of some online courses. This is where a large number of the students are at, and just as you tour campuses, encourage you to either maybe sign up another study session, or individually, if you would like to tour some online courses. This is just some information about, especially one of our history classes. We always ensure that it has universal design for learning, that it's ADA compliant. We focus on OER, open education resources, so there's no cost to textbooks. That saves students about 30% of their educational costs, if they can get through without those. And we also bring innovative technology to the learning experience. Some of the comments made during our preparation is, "This is not your grandma's online course. This is to be a online course from 2025, that students recognize the technology and process being used in these spaces." And it helps support the students' digital fluency in going through this environment. And so one of the things that's taking place with History 142 is all of the things that I just mentioned, but also versioning this course to be even more engaged with the learner. And so, for example, the intent is to make a version for the students in the aviation program, that History of the United States will have relevant progressions in aviation as part of the curriculum. So just they get that deeper buy-in and deeper persistence. And so here is just an example of one of the videos. In our Strive Online grant, we had an update to our Digital Media Center, and here's some of the work that's coming out of that. I don't hear the audio. But okay. We will do this when we have the tour of the courses, right?
I have a quick question while they're trying to figure out the sound. You mentioned earlier about wanting to figure out who's going to get that global award for figuring it all out, and I appreciate that. Actually, before you said that, I wanted to ask, who currently in the nation has the best practices? Who are we modeling? Have we looked at other systems in place that are successful in their online learning processes? And, for example, I know that Monroe College and the California Community College systems do really well, but every community is different, and every audience, every community that we serve is going to be different. Have we looked at similar communities to ours, and who has the best practices that we replicate? Or are you all using somebody in, or a particular college in particular, that is something that we're replicating or improving on?
Yes.
I'm assuming that you all go to conferences and are part of associations, but I'd like to know a little bit more of how we came up with our system.
Yeah. So the way that I would describe kind of the landscape nationally is this aspect of, is online learning centralized or decentralized? And where we see with some of the larger community colleges is they just have more resources to put some specific structures in place. Many of the small community colleges rely heavily on online learning, but it's just completely infused without, throughout their system, and they have challenges with the resource to dedicate that. And so to your point, yes, we have adopted all of the best practices, in essence, and become a leader in them. And really, one of the last areas that we have not, that we're really pursuing, is the e-campus concept. And so a lot of the community colleges in Texas have the e-campus concept that's very robust. We see a lot of community colleges that will say, "We have an e-campus." It's the website, webpage, actually, and there's not really much there, right? So that's kind of, in fact, Dr. Milink and I did a conference session last fall, like, how are we defining our e-campus, because it is all over the map like this? But we are pursuing those best practices from Lone Star to Fort Worth, Tarrant County, Dallas, Austin. They all have the strong e-campus concept in place.
Thank you. For clarification, Chair Taylor, can I ask a question? Is the e-campus operational? Is it up and running? I'm kind of confused whether it's information, or...
Right. The way that I would describe it is, we have a lot more operating as an e-campus than maybe other institutions, but we haven't really done a forward-facing launch to that. And that is because the first implementations on that framework are to do the behind-the-scenes structure. And so last year, it was about a lot of reconciling the data across our system, so that online was defined as online, so that the e-campus could know its data. The second real implementation is this aspect of admissions, so that we know who the students are at the time of entrance. We are lucky enough to be a part of the Element 451 implementation, to bring this along as a comprehensive change to the new admissions process. But that also may have slowed this down a little bit, because we're along for the ride on that, but that is coming into place this year. So that's, that's when we really feel like we can start to do a communication to our students and our community about the e-campus.
Did we figure out the audio?
I think, I think we need to keep going because of time. I apologize. And so I'm open to, again, more questions, but I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Kate Schmidt, Associate Vice Chancellor for Faculty Affairs and Development.
I have quite the title.
Okay, sorry.
So, yes, three months ago, that was my, that was my title, but since July 1, I've been over a new, newly-created unit with existing, newly-created division with existing units, all designed to provide support and resources to students, to faculty, and in some cases, the community. So I think, you know, we, we heard from Michael. Michael was talking about those specific, fully-online students. He's got 10,000 or 6,000 this semester identified. I'm broadening that a little bit to say, you know, the article that Dr. Sovak wrote, all of our students are digital learners now. Like there is, they, every single course, whether it's a face-to-face hybrid, fully-online, has a, has a shell in our learning management system. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about how we're providing resources to all of those students. Okay? Yes?
If you can just adjust your microphone.
Sure, sorry. Andy, is this yours?
Thank you for that, too.
Great. So, as I mentioned, and do I, am I doing my own slides here? I have seven units reporting up to the newly-created Academic Resources and Services, who are just about at our three-month mark. As I said, providing support and resources for faculty, students, the community. I'm going to start with our learning centers. So we have a learning center at every campus and a virtual learning center. We've got the, the hours listed there. We hire tutors through Pima that are all certified and work for our director, Ed Gallagher, who's here in the audience. We also contract with, with a third-party vendor called NetTutor, so that all of our students have 365, you know, 24/7 access to tutors. Ed does an incredible job ensuring that we've got data that show that students that access the learning centers do better in their classes, and I think it's a, it's a pretty dramatic, a dramatic increase. So this is how they access their, their, their tutoring and their, their additional success. This is in your packet. I'm not going to read each of these, but just you can see that there's a big difference. When we can get a student into the tutoring center, they're going to end up doing better in their classes. Did I skip something here? Yeah, so this is the Dr. Tony Sovak's area, which is our learning management system, and he's over the E quality. He really has, has two jobs in one. It was one of those early efficiencies where we had a departure and, and reworked that position, so Tony's really overseeing two areas. One is our learning management system. That's D2L Bright Space. Again, every single course, anything with a CRN in, in our banner system has a D2L shell. So, so one of our concepts that we're working on is making sure that we're, that we're improving that access for students, that we're improving what happens even when you're in a face-to-face class, that we've got some standardization across all classes. This is Tony's, you know, Tony's phrase is that, that D2L has, is the backbone of every course. That's on the learning management side. He's also implemented several quality initiatives, the course checks, where he's got a quality review. And then he's got faculty engagement dashboards that, working with our, with our acting Vice Provost of Academic Affairs, are getting in the hands of deans, so that they can, in real time, make sure that we're improving classes. This will check for something like broken links, or if there's missing data for, or missing information about when, when assignments are due. We're getting on top of that faster, so that we don't have to wait until the end of the semester and, you know, hear, hear from a student that they didn't have what they needed. We also have tonight with us our Director of the Teaching and Learning Center, Dr. Jessica Tinklinberg. And I think, I think, Theresa, you asked earlier about the Teach 125. So actually, that, that Teach 125, the Teach Build Lead series is about a decade old, and as I was looking around the room, there was a large committee that created that 10 years ago, and I think many of those people, can you raise your hand if you were on the Teach Build Lead? Josie, raise your hand. You were on that, right? Many, many people that worked on, on creating that system, that still exists. It is going to be one of the jobs at the Teaching and Learning Center to give that a, a refresh and make sure that everything's relevant. A large project for the Teaching and Learning Center this year is leading the college, establishing college-wide philosophy on teaching and the teaching competencies. One of those competencies is about being adept in the appropriate learning technologies, so they're, so these are competencies, competencies that will allow us to make sure we, we know that we're doing what's best in the classroom, that we're able to assess ourselves on that and provide professional development where there's, there's gaps. We also have added additional resources to support the department heads through the Teaching and Learning Center, because those are really our academic leaders. We've had a long history of the Pima Online Educators Conference that will continue, and we have added through the Teaching and Learning Center a spring symposium. So we will now have the Pima Online Educators Conference in the fall, spring Teaching and Learning Center Symposium. Any questions so far? Oh, this was a huge project. So we have, we hired this fall about 130 new adjunct faculty. For the past five years, we have had an adjunct faculty institute. It was an onboarding program, but it was, it was a synchronous program, sometimes it's virtual, sometimes it was face-to-face, and it happened pre-service, before the semester started. It was mandatory, but we really couldn't, we couldn't force people to go because... It was mandatory, but we really couldn't, we couldn't force people to go because if they were hired after it ended, there wasn't anything for them. So Jessica's team worked on rebuilding the adjunct faculty institute, and it is now a fully asynchronous, and so far have some fantastic, it's, it's really just about two months old. I think it rolled out on the first of, of, or I guess it was the first, first of August. So yeah, just about two months old. We've got data already from people that are completing, that they're, they're more confident about their ability to teach and that they're prepared to apply the competencies in their classroom. So what we're most excited about that is that it helps us reach one of our HLC, the feedback from the HLC that, that some, some of the faculty teaching in remote locations or additional locations didn't have some of the information, hadn't been oriented to Pima. So now that's a requirement for anybody teaching in any modality and in any location. We also have had, for a, a long time, a resource center at every campus that provides all kinds of support for faculty. They also have the first-level ticketing for anything that, that's happening in, in D2L. They also offer virtual services to faculty if they can't come to one of the centers. So that's, that's my overview of the Academic Resources and Services Division. We're, we're offering all of our services in face-to-face and virtual environments. So are there any other questions or discussion for me or for my colleagues?
I know Chancellor Nassi wanted to add a few comments, too, if you want to jump in before we hit questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, all of our board members. Great to see all of you, and I, I like study sessions, right, because they give us a chance to kind of talk and learn, and I must tell you, you know, I've been so impressed with, with Pima Online, as was mentioned before, got a chance to look at the classes and, and I can, and like Kim Lisa said, right, I was teaching online when online wasn't, wasn't cool either, and it's come a long way. It is remarkable what's happening in our online spaces. And I can attest to what Dr. Amick was saying. I, I remember being in Florida and, and hearing about Pima Online, right? Certainly had a national reputation in the community college space for what they're doing online, so love what's happening. You know, it's interesting, you know, and, and I think it's come through in this presentation, you know, lines are being blurred, right? Our lives are largely online in lots of different ways that they weren't in the past, and so is instruction, right? You've heard tonight that every one of our classes, no matter where they are, have a, have a D2L shell, and I know faculty and even the most traditional of face-to-face classes using online pieces to that, whether that's gradebooks or discussions and all kinds of supporting materials, open educational resources. And, so what is online and what isn't online is really interesting and, but certainly a huge area of growth for the college and one we want to continue to scale, right? And it's all about providing lots of options for our students, and, and I think that's exciting, right? It's really exciting. Now, student success is always a challenge. I wouldn't say it's unique to online. Yes, there are those online, and there are some of those traditional barriers, but as you know, our focus on all of those student success metrics, it's across the way we deliver education. And so, I, I wouldn't say, oh, you know, online, the students are less successful, you know, they're successful in a lot of different ways. And, and by the way, you know, that's, that's how we experience the world, right? It's going to be some component of, of online. And so, certainly, I appreciate Vice Chair Burnell Morales's question about, you know, who are the people doing it well? I know Pima is certainly there, right, in, in, in the community college space, and we want to continue. We certainly, I, you know, I think we all want, you heard our faculty, by the way, thank you for all the faculty coming today to kind of add their perspective. Again, that's what's great about study sessions, is you kind of get all these views, but we want to be the best online community college, for sure, and getting better in this space. And I just want to give that team recognition, they're constantly, we are constantly talking about how we can get better in these spaces and improve in, in that area for the benefit of our students, because we know more and more and more of our students are choosing this as an option, and we want to make sure that they're successful. And it's interesting to think about, too, is how do we serve those students? We have students that take a little bit of both, right? They're taking in-person, they're taking some online. Michael mentioned nationally, it's about 50%. We're a little under that, I think around 45%. And then, we have fully online students that use our campus resources. So how are we creating spaces also to support online learning? So, lots of exciting areas. I'm interested to hear the board's questions, comments, insight into this, into this really, I think, exciting space, and I think we're still just at the beginning, right? As, as we get deeper into virtual reality, augmented reality, of course, artificial intelligence, all of these things, you know, online will continue to really advance. I'm sure in 10 or 15 years from now, what, what you experience in an online class will be dramatically different than what we're doing now, and I think that's thrilling, and I'm, I'm excited to be a part of it. So, thank you for the presentations. Eager to hear comments, questions, and discussions in this area.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any questions?
I have one small question. The slide that has the success rate of the learning centers, what's the difference between online and virtual?
I'm pretty sure virtual is synchronous, is that right, Ed?
Virtual is usual.
Come on up.
Not an expert, but I'll do my best.
So, with the definition that we've been given, virtual is asynchronous, not-on-campus setting, so usually done either through Zoom, Google Meets, or sometimes through the internal D2L platforms. So, when we went to COVID, everybody had to switch immediately to a virtual setting of some sort, either fully online, or we had to transition the in-person courses to a like situation, which was what virtual has become. Did that help?
I've taken a closer look.
Can you do a better one, please?
So, we call our asynchronous offerings online. That means that the student does not have a specific required time that they need to log in and do something. We call our synchronous online courses virtual, which means that they will get a schedule, that there will be days and times that they have to log in, but it's delivered over the internet, they don't have to go to a place.
Perfect, thank you.
Pramavriya?
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you for the presentation, too, and thanks for all the faculty and folks here to give us your expertise. I think the whole board is really pleased with the online programs that we offer here at the college. I, I don't think that's the worry. I think that there's just specific areas, from my point of view, the two that concern me are, the dev ed math classes are extremely low, and we didn't break them out, so, you know, those, those didn't, I, I'm wondering if you took the dev ed math classes out, what our success rates would be in the online courses? It might be something to think about. And then the second thing that I've heard is that when a class is filled at the beginning of the semester, before the semester starts, they don't open up another, if it's an in-person class, they don't open up another in-person class, they only open up online classes. And so, no, that's not true? But I would like to just mention something about that, if there's any veracity to it. Students who, who register very, very late, already, most of them are going to have success difficulties, and to put them in a, in a situation like that, that, that's just, you know, I think that if, if we, if it's an online class that fills, it should be an online class that is added, and if it's an in-person class that fills, it should be an in-person class that's opened.
So, we can address both of those at a high level this evening, and I don't know if we can tease out the data on the dev ed this evening. We may be able to, because I'm going to ask Robert Roth to, to come up for the dev ed, but I'm going to ask Emily to, if you're, if you or James Gray could talk about the dev ed math piece, and then Emily can address, and since she's closer, we'll call up first the scheduling piece.
So, the reality is that it's going to depend upon your availability of your adjuncts and your faculty. So there is no set, yes, because all of our in-person courses have filled, we automatically are offering an online class. We really try and look at scheduling across the college what our availability is in terms of who we have, and when you brought it up, most of that decision-making that you're really thinking about is happening pretty close to the start of the semester, right? And so, sometimes you only have an adjunct who can teach in the evening, sometimes you have an adjunct who are full-time, can only teach online. So it's really a combination of factors that are going into why and what you are able to schedule at that point in time. There is no set, oh, classes online, in-person classes are filled, and therefore, we're adding an online class. It's really trying to look at it very holistically and what we are able to offer to provide for those students. And sometimes it's space limitations, and so, it's a number of things that go into it.
And then my last question is, so, I can't remember what it was called, but just recently, I know Kim Lisa was here speaking because we did something where I thought we disbanded a Pima Online, was it the department that, anyway, whatever that was. So my question is, I have heard that there used to be a handbook that had all sorts of policies and procedures in it for online, everything, online teaching, online coursework, online training, on and on and on, eligibility for teaching online classes, eligibility for, for developing the website, all of those kind of things. And I have heard that that is not present anymore because it's not part of the current structure. And I'm just wondering, was that something that maybe got missed when, when we did the change? I know that there was not a lot of shared governance going on during that change, so, you know, maybe it could have been that, but I, I'm wondering, how many extra problems is that causing you all if you don't have that handbook?
So that, that's an excellent question, Board Riel, and what I would say is that when Pima Online was brought back into the divisions, right, that knowledge still was brought there. And while that handbook was very much a Pima Online handbook, there is still reference to it, and yet, it was a Pima Online handbook, and Pima Online as a division does not exist. And so, that is, information can be utilized and resourced through that handbook and brought in for ensuring quality, ensuring that there is also how we view hiring, et cetera. For teaching online, we can always do a better job at making sure that it is consistent throughout all of the divisions because it was specialized to Pima Online. And, and I would also argue that many of the deans do have some of that content knowledge and that, knowing that that is a resource. So I wouldn't say it is 100% dissolved and gone away, and again, there's also opportunities for growth in some areas as well.
Any other questions?
I do have one more.
Go ahead.
At some point, maybe not today, it would be nice to know what, what other initiatives you all are planning as far as the success, you know, paying attention to the success of students and programs, because I know that faculty are deeply committed to their online courses, you know, it's their, it's sort of like a child, you developed it, you know, you, you grew it into this amazing thing, and it would be nice for all of us to know what kind of initiatives are planned down the pike for ensuring that all of our courses have the same kind of success as some of those ones that have really great success rates. Thank you.
I know, I think we're going to get, we were going to talk to the dev ed math issue, too. Sorry, I sort of skipped past you there unintentionally.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, hello, everybody. My name is James Graham, the dean of the math division here at Pima, and I can, I can give some, some more details about the dev ed math online. So if you just look generally, it's going to be about 50%, and that's going to be about 14% is below, percentage is below what it is for, for in-person classes. If you take a look at the individual courses, there's the ICS 81 course, and this course actually has a success rate in the 70s for online classes. And, and what they do is, is students need permission of the instructor to be able to get into that class. So it is a strategy that excludes a lot of students, but, but that's a particular course that has success rates which is higher. So if you take a look at our 97 class in particular over last year, so, I believe the gentleman's name is Eric, and was talking about the, the impact of a single instructor. So we had one particular instructor who taught many of those courses, and that particular instructor tends to have lower success rates. And so, we expect, for a couple of reasons, for the success rates in the 97 to go up because, one, that particular instructor is not teaching as many sections of 97, but we're also, we're also implementing a newly redesigned Math 97 course, and that course is now paired together with our 92LB, so the students get extra support in that particular course. So the other two courses, Math 95 and Math, Math 92, so those particular courses are no longer being offered, so those students are being put into, into co-requisite courses. So in particular, the 92 students, if you take a look at where those students are going now, they're going to be placed directly into the Math 142 course. And if you take a look at the success rates for those particular students, those particular students have a success rate somewhere around the 60%. So there is a reality to it, that, that online math, developmental math course is about 50%. Part of that reality is, is that that's about the success rates for all, all math courses online, and it is something that, that we do need to take seriously.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so then, just to address, you know, what else are, are we going to be doing? A couple more comments about the Department Head Pima Online Handbook. That is officially archived, and like Emily was saying, a lot of folks do use that as a resource, but yet, there is that concern about the inconsistency. So that is one of the things that we are aware of and want to work on, and in fact, Provost has charged Kate Schmidt and I to work on that concept that, that Dr. Rourke has talked about, that these quality aspects need to be present for all aspects of, regardless of the modality. And so, the idea is to either nest what was happening with online inside of something that's more comprehensive, that provides all of this clarity to department heads for processes, accountability, et cetera. And so that's one aspect of what we're doing there, and I'm not sure if you were asking about this, like, what are we going to do for these quality aspects? That was a lot of the intent of our Strive Online grant, and so we do want to really have those conversations about how do we shift and adapt and go forward with, with those impacts.
Any other questions? No? I'll just conclude this section, just again, thank you for all of you that, that attended today. We appreciate your work and your expertise and everything you do for, for Pima students. You know, for my part, maybe I'm misreading, but I was sort of sensing this underlying concern that maybe we, or I can only speak for myself, but that I was concerned about online education. I think it's critical that we have an online education program for all the reasons that you outlined. The, you know, if, and to the extent that I, or maybe even my colleagues, ask questions about some of the student outcomes, it's just to make sure that the institution stays focused on closing those gaps. It's not, I don't think any of us are questioning whether we should have online education for, again, for all, all the reasons that are there. We just want to make sure that, I mean, it's, like I said, it's critical for educational access, so if that was something that was worrying anyone, please soothe, soothe those nerves. We just want to make sure that, you know, as, that you all are clearly committed to providing, you know, a high-quality education experience. We want to make sure that we're continuing to see those outcomes, and I, I'm confident from everything I heard tonight that, you know, we'll continue to have that focus, that all of your work will continue to positively impact the lives of our students, and, and we'll hopefully come up with some innovative ways to close those gaps. And we just want to make sure we're keeping an eye on it as we steward the institution forward. So again, thank you all. I really appreciate your time with us tonight and, and your time in the public comment period. We'll put that out to call up Dr. Rourke. You want to move us on to the empowering... You want to move us on to the Empowering Entrepreneur section, 3.2?
I will start speaking when my slide deck is up. Again, thank you for everybody who gave public comment and to those who presented. I just want to close, if I may, on one final point. Michael Lemick did speak to it, but it is true that one of the items that I have on my list was that we do not lose what was built with Pima Online in terms of the quality of online, the teach, learn, build, the handbook. And the mission that was given was build off of that and ensure that we are addressing that level of quality and fidelity across all of our modalities, especially since all of our learners are going to have some measure of online education, even if it's a hybrid course or program. So we look forward to bringing that forward more in the future. With that, we are going to be talking now about the Southern Arizona Technology and Entrepreneurship Center. There are a number of individuals in the audience who either serve on SATech, I'm gonna use the acronym now since I spelled it out once, that are on the SATech Advisory Board. There are also some students and also some clients of SATech. They will be introduced individually throughout Lydia Kennedy's presentation. Lydia is our manager for the Southern Entrepreneurship, Southern Arizona Technology and Entrepreneurship Center, or SATech. I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of history as to why does Pima Community College even have an incubator? And what is that? So why Pima created SATech? Really, there's a national landscape of incubators and the role of higher education across the country, predominantly in the university space, although not unique to four-year institutions. And there is an ecosystem of startups and incubation across Southern Arizona and Southern Arizona in metropolitan Tucson are really known to be a hub for innovation and technology.
Can I pause you just for one second? Whoever's controlling the screens, could we get the slides on this? I'm looking at Dr. Nasty right now, which is wonderful, but I would, the screen, the slides would be nice on the screen that's forward. There we go, thank you.
And so one of the things that we brought to the institution in 2016 was the Small Business Development Center. And the director at that time was named Ellen Curtin. There are some in the room who knew Ellen, who passed away during the course of the pandemic. She was the director of the SBDC and reported to me as the vice president of workforce development at the time. And once we, what I called rehoused or re-hosted the Small Business Development Center, Ellen came to me very specific, with two specific additional requests. One, we, great, you have the SBDC, but to really do what powerful community colleges or good community colleges are doing in the innovation space, there are two additional attributes that you need as a college but do not have. One, we need an entrepreneurship program. And I don't know if Vivian Knight is still here. She is, I'm proud to say that our business faculty and our business leadership with Dean Jim Crey have launched this year that entrepreneurship program at Pima. Additionally, Ellen said we need to have an incubator. You know Maricopa has an incubator. I'm always like, well, if Maricopa has an incubator and Pima doesn't, maybe we should. But really, what was the real need in the community that perhaps Pima Community College could fill, right? If we're going to pursue having an incubator, it's got to have some educational purpose aligned to our mission and vision. And as you may recall, this was about the time we started talking about the Centers of Excellence at Pima Community College. And Ellen came back in 2017 after we had our series of workshops for the community related to needs for our Centers of Excellence, that the team came back with an idea and a gap that was identified, which was particularly with manufacturing. And you've seen the advanced manufacturing building. Well, at 2017, that was just like a concept. And it was, really, the team came to me and said, we really would like to have an incubator related to advanced manufacturing that's located in this manufacturing building. That will provide something to small business develop, small business owners and leaders in our community that really can be provided, which is the ability to work and design and prototype all in one, all in one space. In addition, I had a thought at that time as well, which was, great. You know, we are really good at Pima at building programs, particularly in technical education, where students learn to work for somebody else. They're going to be employed, and that's great. And we also would like our learners to have that dream of maybe being the small business owner themselves. And how can we have a concept and a place and a space within the manufacturing building that brings that all to one focus? And so it wasn't called SATech at the time, but the idea of having a manufacturing-focused incubator was born circa 2017 out of those conversations. And so by having both the SBDC as well as SATech join together, we are now playing a greater role in our community's entrepreneurial ecosystem in partnership with the incubators and units that are at the University of Arizona, as well as entities such as Startup Tucson and others. We have the ability to be a convener. And as you hear from Lydia and actually see photos in the slide deck, you'll see some actual examples of how we have been that convener around entrepreneurship. And finally, we have a competitive edge in this part of the ecosystem by being the host of the Small Business Development Center, which provides a lot of resources for startups, as well as ongoing small businesses. And having SATech available and able to utilize both the SBDC as well as the expertise of our faculty and staff in the advanced manufacturing building really brings something to, unique to our approach to innovation. As we are not as large as the University of Arizona and don't have an entire wing of the college dedicated to innovation, we do have a small team for SATech. SATech is overseen by Sue Oliver, who's also here. Sue is our director of innovation and the SBDC. And about 50% of her time is dedicated to SATech work and initiatives. And we also have Lydia, whom you'll hear from next, who is our manager at the institution. We also have part-time students, as well as our volunteers. And then for this last bullet, the level of investment was really, we're grateful to the college at the time for allowing us to include SATech in the design of the advanced manufacturing building. If you have not seen this space, it's a lovely space. It is, it's actually quite amazing, and we get requests all the time. Can we meet here? Can we do stuff here that are not related to the core mission even of SATech because of how beautiful the space actually is? So we invested in that portion of the advanced manufacturing building. And also Lydia is a generally funded FTE and part of Sue's salary per the SBDC grant is also generally funded by the institution. And then we also have our operating budget. And then, of course, to build out and fill out the incubator space after the building was built, it's over $200, $250,000 of additional furniture and IT equipment that we have placed into the space. And I think this is where I turn it over to Lydia.
Actually, Provost Rourke, before we turn it over, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And I'm asking you directly because you're the leadership overseeing SATech. Explain to me, and to be fair, you know that I know SATech really well and I know everybody involved. Tell me from your perspective, is SATech focused on workforce development, economic development, or commercialization as an incubator?
Not, we do not have the capacity to do commercialization on that last one. That would require extensive staff beyond what we currently have. But really, what SATech is about is ultimately ensuring, I mean, a lot of different things, but ultimately ensuring that our learners see the pathway to being that client of SATech on their own and building their own small business. That would be the ideal fulfillment of what the original vision was.
Okay, thank you.
So economic and workforce development, to clarify, Vice Chair.
Perfect, thank you. And just for clarification, when you mentioned the introduction, you talked about how it was created from the advanced manufacturing mindset. Is that still the case now? Is that the focus?
I think largely, but not solely. So there can also be other, as you'll hear from one of our clients this evening. So not necessarily, always related directly to advanced manufacturing, but really focusing in that word "technology" more broadly. If we just say manufacturing or applied technology, it imbues that only students in that division are going to be able to access the services and resources that SATech provides. We really want to broaden that out across all STEM and technological fields.
Okay, thank you. And to be fair to the rest of the team, I have like 100 questions. Even though I'm deeply involved, I have like 100 questions for the sake of creating an opportunity and a space to inform and educate everybody about what SATech is about. So just FYI.
All right. So that was two, so 98 left. All right. Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Board. Thank you very much, and Chancellor. What a pleasure to be here. I wanted to share a little bit about SATech and our unique values that we have. So I want to thank Ian, Amanda, and Sue, the Board of Governors, and many people that have helped SATech activate, including facilities management, information technology, Dean Wilson and his team, advisory committee members, and many more. I'm grateful for the many people sharing their time, talents, and treasures that made SATech possible. And my unique ability has always been about people, customer service, connecting, making sure no one is lost in the process. That shows up in my own story. My unique ability is that I am a first-generation college student and also a scholarship recipient from Pima Community College. And I worked and went to school at the same time. And interesting enough, before coming to Pima that summer, I had a colleague who said, do you know where your classes are? And I said, no, isn't there an orientation? Don't they give you a tour? She's like, no, I will meet you on Saturday and show you where your classes are. And thank goodness for that guardian angel because I would never have known to do that. And many students, I graduated in 1989, dating myself, and started college 1989, 1990, and it's still the case today. It's something that I'm glad that's in the Chancellor's goals, that we need to continue to work on. And I saw that there's a mandatory orientation, which is fantastic. And when I transferred to the University of Arizona, I didn't have that support. There was no map, there were no mentors, there was no guidance. I floundered, I bounced around like a pinball, figuring things out by trial and error. The gap I experienced is exactly what SATech is here to solve. We are that map, we are that guide, that bridge between students, entrepreneurs, and our regional economy. We can position Pima as the center of Southern Arizona entrepreneurship ecosystem. Research shows 3% to 5% of college students start businesses after graduation. And within our ecosystem, it is serving students. That lack of clear pathways is exactly the gap SATech was created to solve for our students, our community members, and our region's entrepreneurs. And the differentiation piece that SATech, as you may be aware, that there are a lot of entrepreneurship programs out there, online, locally, and many are free. So what makes SATech difference? If we stopped just hosting workshops and giving advice, that would be a 2X version. But that's not who we are. We're a 10X version. The one we've built gives people prototyping, workforce integration, and the direct expert entrepreneur access and community connections all under one roof. And here's what gets exciting. We have the Small Business Development Center under Sue Oliver's leadership is now going to be housed in SATech. We already have SBDC in there. We have our workshop of Dream Builder that you have a copy in your packet that will be starting October 7th. So our entrepreneurs get free counseling and services that actually build sustainable businesses. And since I started in December 2023, I had had the pleasure to work with Dean Wilson, the Applied Technology, to connect entrepreneurs in the trades, facilities management with Michael Smith. And we're aligned with Vivian Knight, Judge Curtis, with the Business Club. We're collaborating with Dean Dana Rose with Pima Arts, Center of Excellence. And we're gonna have our first merging of artistry and businesses at the West Campus on October 23rd with a fireside chat. In addition to that, we're building strong external partnerships with our advisory committee that you'll learn more about and happy to have several here. We have a strong partnership with Catholic University of America, have an intern working with us now, and they bring a lot of folks into our space. Arizona Technology Council, thank you very much, Vice Chair Morales. To connect entrepreneurs, we also have Tucson IDA, which stands for Industrial Development Authority, also with Groundswell Capital. Credit Unions is one that I focus heavily on to bring additional capital resources to our ecosystem. And this combination really makes SATech a true entrepreneurship hub, a bridge that brings PCC students, our faculty, our staff, our community members, and entrepreneurs together. And I'll tell you, I'm a big believer in learning from great minds. And two books I recommend highly is 10X is Easier Than 2X by Dan Sullivan and Dr. Benjamin Hardy, which shows how world-class entrepreneurs achieve more by doing less. And The Geek Way, which is all about how innovative organizations build adaptive cultures, and that's the spirit of SATech. I invite you to help us amplify that distinction. Because when people see what's happening here, they'll realize that SATech is leading the way. And many because we have our great prototyping support. Again, I want to just pause and acknowledge that people who've made prototyping work possible was not an easy feat. Dean Wilson, his team, they've been instrumental in opening the doors. They are still teaching students. And that portion to do prototyping is in addition to the job that they do. We also have Maria from Legal, who helped with the wonderful licensing agreements. David Parker from Risk Management. Without their guidance and clearance, we would not be allowed to have prototyping support. And our campus vice president Nina has been a champion helping us embed the work right here in the downtown campus. And SATech is not a solo effort. God bless you. It's in partnerships like these across PCC that allow us to turn those realities, ideas into realities, which is very, very important. And I want to show you really great photos. We have a person who came, a CISA, and we call her an intrapreneur. An intrapreneur is a person who works inside an organization but who thinks like an entrepreneur and is spotting opportunities, driving innovation. And she came up with this idea, separate from her organization, but that she really wanted a brush, makeup brush kit that would work for travel. And what she found was when you're in a plane and you're in the bathroom and you need to brush up, your brushes are everywhere and they could fall on the floor. And she wanted a compact prototype where you could use a, you know, a magnet so it would hold them in place, and you could keep them in your purse and they wouldn't fall out. And our own person, Chad Gardner, from the makeup that she had, she didn't provide the right type of tools that he needed or plans. And he was able to design this for her, and she loved it. She really was happy about the whole thing. But there's complications behind that, right? Whose design is it really? So those are things that we need to factor in when these things are happening. In addition to, we have Joanna Odell, who is in our space. She's a membership, has a membership now. And she asked for a bench grinder. And Peter Hollins from Machining built this for her. And it's really wonderful to see that, just in months, we've gone from ideas to real products. And proof that SATech is where ideas come to life. And impact since our ribbon cutting. We've built experience at SATech that make entrepreneurship real and accessible. We've had fireside chats. And why are those important? Because they bring entrepreneurs into the space to share their full journey, the struggles, the wins, and students see the resilience as part of success. We're bringing expert entrepreneur exchanges, giving hands-on, real-world experiences to students and community entrepreneurs who never even knew those resources were available. So if you have a business but you didn't do your website, we'll have a marketing person come in and they'll be able to ask questions. What do I need? How do I start a website? With AI, it's amazing, you can do your own website now. So there's a lot of amazing things that we're bringing to folks to have those wonderful, hands-on, real-world connections. Our Business-to-Business Expo was a success, as it's shown here in the picture as well. We had over 85 RCPs, we had 68 people that showed up. In addition to, we had about 10, 11 exhibitors, and we had to add more tables because 13 showed up. And it was a great networking experience that people really enjoyed. We're also adding a Summer Youth Entrepreneur Week Program in partnership with Pima for Youth that reaches the 7th through 12th graders, planting the seed early and serving as a recruitment pipeline to Pima. Many of the youngsters are already entrepreneurs and running businesses. And with online capabilities, it makes it so much easier to do and with AI. We're also helping families to connect with Pima who've never set foot on our campus. Think about that, where is our incubator? SATech is on the third floor of the advanced manufacturing building on the downtown campus. If you don't know about a community college or you're not comfortable going to a community college, why would you come to our doors? You have to know it's there, you have to have a reason to go there. So these are things we're gonna really break down those barriers to help people feel more accessible, more welcomed, and more aware. So that's what SATech is about. We're not So that's what SATech is about. We're not just offering the office space events. We're creating experiences to give that to students, families, community entrepreneurs, that sense of belonging, that clear pathway, and the tools to bring their ideas to life. And quick stories. I had a PCC staff member. She bought properties from her dad, a duplex. And she made an appointment with me because she heard of someone else that we had this great place. For 10 years, she tried to create an LLC. In one afternoon, one hour, she walked out with an LLC. She walked out with an employee identification number. And I gave her referral to a bank, which happened to be her own bank, which was a credit union. How much do you think it costs to start a business account? What kind of deposit do you need to have? What do you think?
It's like, I think it's $500, right?
So you have $500. Anybody else? $250. Anybody else? $1, $5 with Pima Federal Credit Union. She was able to open a bank account for Pima Federal Credit Union. But for 10 years, she's been mingling the money with her own personal accounts, and really letting her know. Her accountant had advised her, her attorney had advised her. But she couldn't, with the resources and where she was going, it just was confusing to her. She couldn't get it off the ground. So those are the type of great services that we're offering at SATech. And then we're exceeding expectations. As of today, we had 16 applications. We have a new license in the work. That will bring us to four. Served over 100 students with great, again, collaborations with Dean Wilson, faculty bringing students to our events, Vivian Knight, Judge Curtis with the PCC Business Club leaders, our Business Club Presidents, the Business Mock Competition. I was asked to be a judge, and I'm glad to hear that we won first and second place. We also hosted Business Club Meetings two weeks ago, and we had Catholic University in Person along with Thunderbird School of Global Management virtually. We have meetings with various organizations, collaborators. We've hosted AI Trailblazers, events for AI for small businesses with AZ Tech Council, Optics Valley. And Catholic University brings tour groups into our facilities. So we have Yuma Catholic High School Tour, Sunnyside, Desert View, Salpoint, Tucson High. Lots of students that are coming into our space and really enjoying. And speaking of students, we do have Fahim here. Before Fahim comes and speaks, we have a success stories from Rebecca, who unfortunately has a class at the university. She graduated from Pima Community College and is a transfer student to U of A and will be graduating, so she is a senior. She couldn't be here tonight, but she sends her regards. And she says, "I'm Rebecca, a proud PCC alumnus. I am grateful to have worked at SATech alongside Lydia. Working with her was amazing, truly helpful experience. I was able to learn so much from her experience. At that time, I had just started my two organizations. She guided me in developing new skills that I continue to carry forward. I'm now a senior, have recently completed my marketing minor at the University of Arizona. Bringing part of the SATech team taught me invaluable lessons in marketing that I'll apply in my future endeavors, especially as I pursue my dream of starting a profit business." Lydia is not only highly skilled, but also caring, supportive, always ready to listen, take action. She's the best person to work with, and I truly miss the times and moments we shared at SATech. I would absolutely encourage and recommend students to take advantage of the incredible resources SATech has to offer. And with that, I'd like to bring Fahim up. Jin Tong unfortunately was sick, so he wasn't able to make it. And Jin Tong is a fabulous student who also transferred to U of A with a master's in finance. And he asked me, and he said, "Could you please help me find an internship?" And because of Catholic University being in our space, we had a person that works for Tucson Federal Credit Union. I pulled them aside that day. "Could you help our student out?" And that real-world connection, relationships are currency, happened, and he was able to have an internship this past summer. And with that, I'd like to bring Fahim, who is an amazing student and really helped tremendously this past year with SATech, and especially our Business-to-Business Expo, along with many of our other Toastmasters and other events. So with that, Fahim.
Thank you, everyone, for giving me the chance to be here. So I'm Fahim Nur. I'm an international student up here. So just coming from a different country, don't know where I am, figuring out everything by myself, no family, nothing here. So I was always interested in entrepreneurship. Like, my dad is a businessman. I'm coming from that background. And I'm doing cybersecurity up here. So one day, I was like searching on my laptop, like what entrepreneurship opportunity Pima Community College have, and I got connected with SATech. So I saw they're like taking applications. I applied. I met with the best person of my life, Lydia Kennedy. Like, she's like a family to me. Like, I had an accident three months ago. She was there for me. She was always calling me, "How am I? What I'm doing?" and everything. So like, I have a lot of business plans and things. I always call her, ask like what I should do, and she always guide me through it. Like, I learned a lot from SATech. Like, it's my first job. And the best part about Lydia is like she used to always take me and Jin Tong to everywhere she's going. So we were actually seeing the job experience of what happens in the United States, like the entrepreneurship side. And also Sue and Lydia, they're like not just a job thing for me. They're the family. For any small thing, I will be always there with them. And that's, thank you for every, every opportunity you guys gave me. And special thanks to Lydia and Sue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Fahim. We're excited to share that we have two folks in our SATech space, Safety, Health, Environmental Consulting, and Joanna Odell is here to speak. And we have Brew Bites, who just signed and will start officially on October 1st, who is a licensing agreement that's been finalized on healthy pet products with Tai Young. And with that, I'd like to bring Joanna Odell. She is a veteran and also a female entrepreneur. She served at the US Navy. And I'd like to bring her to speak.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys doing? I know a few of you guys. I met the Chancellor a couple of weeks ago, Carla. We serve on women in the workforce for the Arizona Tech Council. So a couple new faces, or a couple familiar faces. So hello, my name is Joanna Odell. I'm the CEO of Safety, Health, and Environmental Consulting. I opened my business in December of 2021. However, a little backstory, it's the third business I've actually owned. But this is the first one I've been out on my own instead of with a significant other. So there is always a learning curve when it comes to business acumen. Like, I know my industry inside and out. I can do it blind. But I'm a Certified Safety Professional, and I have been for over 20 years now. My company, Safety, Health, and Environmental Consulting, we do audits, for instance, like ISO 9001, which is Quality Management System, Safety and Health, which is 45001, or Environmental Management System, which is ISO 14001. Or I'll do OSHA mock inspections. I'll do trainings, like your OSHA 30 hours. I'll do any of your environmentals. I'll do Department of Transportation, Army Corps of Engineers, you name it. I'm your man. And I specialize in construction, manufacturing, technology. But honestly, in my industry, it covers pretty much most industries. So you name it, and I can tell you what you need, from ergonomics to, you know, building a skyscraper. And if I can't, I know the right person to, you know, help you. So as Lydia mentioned, I do work on government contracts with regards to teaming up with a prime. And I have what they need in terms of, I have all the socioeconomic awards. I am a service-disabled veteran-owned small business and economically disadvantaged woman-owned small business. I have my DBE and my SBE. And if I want, I can be a hub zone too. I just haven't sat down and done the paperwork yet. As a sole proprietor of Safety, Health, and Environmental Consulting, SATech at Pima Community College has enabled my business to be extremely productive. I previously would, you know, sit at home with the home office and, very well-intentioned, you know, "I'm going to get something done today." Nope, I had squirrel syndrome. So I just happened to be talking to Sue Oliver, and she was like, "Well, hey, we have SATech here." And I'm like, "I've never heard of SATech. What is this?" And she's, "Oh, you would fit in great here. You know, you're an entrepreneur. You're doing technology, entrepreneurship." I'm like, "Yeah, I would fit in great there. Let's make this happen." So she introduced me to Lydia, and you know, it's been, you know, a great marriage. And because it's centered downtown, I'm able to bring my clients there and show them around. And it feels like I've got a real business. You know, I feel like an adult. It allows me to, like I said, bring my colleagues there and further my business opportunities. In addition to networking events, I have been able to work with manufacturing and technology departments there to further my business, as well as establish for our Pima Community College to build and, build a bridge between the military and the private entrepreneur startup businesses. So I started with getting my Boots-to-Business certificate. I don't know if all of you guys have heard of that or not. Anybody? All right. So it's something that you can get through the military. But some of the things that I've worked on since being at SATech, I've tabled at Ribbon Cutting. I've had a table at the Jutos B2B. I've passed out flyers for network luncheons at Optics Valley. I've worked with SBDC in that, because they sit over at SATech, they asked me to do a presentation, "Safety for Small Businesses: What Do You Need to Know?" We had a hybrid version. And then I'm also doing a spanking event on October 22nd, Expert Entrepreneur Exchange. So the students will come in, and I'll kind of tell them how to procure and secure government contracts. And then November 12th, we're going to do a Veteran Entrepreneur Journey with myself, kind of how I started and got to where I am now. As Lydia previously mentioned, I've used you guys as prototyping services. For example, the manufacturing bench grinder safety tool. One of OSHA's sidable offenses is if you're a bench grinder. Have you guys all seen it? It's like a grinder on one side and a sander on the other. There's like a tongue and groove on one side and another spacer on the other that has to be either a quarter of an inch or an eighth of an inch respectively. And if it's not, it's an OSHA sidable offense. So I'm here to say, "Hey, here's a tool that, you know, for anybody in that industry to make your life a little bit easier." I've provided mentorship to an emerging entrepreneur. After the Jutos B2B Tabled Event that I did, a young business student from the college just happened to run into me in the elevator. And she's like, "Oh, who are you? You look important." Because I had my box of the Tabled Events with me. And I'm like, oh, you know, I introduced myself to her, and next thing I know, I'm taken her under my wing. And she previously was doing cosmetology. And I was like, "Yeah, sure, I'll help you. What do you want to know?" And come to find out, she had a few learning disabilities, but you know, whatever, that's fine. I can work with that. Anyway, I taught her some business acumen. I showed her that it's extremely easy to open up your own website. And so I kind of walked her through that and all of the things that I started to do to open my business. There's a list of 10 items that you got to be able to do. And I showed her that, and we kind of walked through it a little bit. One of the other things I've done is help to pilot that SATech space and do some beta testing. I've also said that I'd help with STRIVE with regards to coaching military veterans to become entrepreneurs. I'm enrolled in Dream Builders, so it's been kind of a give and take in that I'm getting something back from SATech and I'm giving to them. I've been working with SATech Program Manager for Different Ideas on Entrepreneur. I met with her, and she showed me how easy it was to be able to publish my own books. I've written three different books, and now it's just a matter of sitting down and, you know, putting them out there on Amazon to be sold. And who knew? That was always something that seemed like a lofty goal to me. But I just happened to have this conversation with her, and I got back some information. And who knew? I'm also in the process of becoming an adjunct instructor for the Applied Sciences. Well, actually, I've completed the paperwork, and as soon as they're ready, I'll teach an OSHA 30-hour training. All right. And I'll pass it back to Lydia. Thank you.
And all of this work has been really instrumental. I want to take a moment to recognize and thank our SATech Advisory Committee. We have Gavin Gigstad. He is the founder of Gigstride, and he created a prototype, a prototype to help folks with multiple sclerosis. And that prototype is actually in clinical trials at Johns Hopkins currently. We have Vivian Knight, PCC Business Department Head. We have Dr. Marcus, President of Marcus Engineering, who will be speaking in a moment. Leanne Wong, who is here in the audience, and President of LGBT Foundation and also Realtor. We have Greg Moy, our CEO and founder of the Inventive Guild, who is here and drove down from Sierra Vista to be with us tonight. And he was actually one of the first to donate the proceeds from one of his workshops and give them to SATech. So we really are grateful for his generosity. Dr. Ian Rorick, Patty DeBois, Sue Oliver, Greg Wilson, Dre Thompson, CEO, Tucson IDA, happy to have that new one, and then myself. And this amazing group of experts has really been so generous. They've been generous with their time, their talents, and their treasures to help launch SATech. What's unique is they didn't want to meet just the usual twice a year. They wanted to meet every month. They were very invested, and still heavily invested, to be actively engaged in shaping SATech. Their guidance, advocacy, and helping us accelerate SATech faster than was ever could be done. On average, it's usually three years to develop a business and/or a new spot. And the true spirit of collaboration, we're stronger and we're better. And Patrick is here to also share about that experience. Patrick has been instrumental as our advisory committee member. He's helped to launch and activate SATech. He introduced us to his inner circle with Justin Williams, with Startup Tucson founder, who has actually submitted an application to be in our space. And Justin referred Ty to SATech, who is with Brew Bites USA. And so we're really excited, just again, about our folks sharing their time, talents, and treasures. And with that, Patrick.
I'm tall. Let me get this adjusted just right. All right. Well, it's a, it's a pleasure to get to speak to you. I know some of you on this, this board very, very well. It's nice to meet those of you who I haven't met before. As Lydia mentioned, I'm an entrepreneur. I own an engineering company here in town. And I've grown multiple successful technology businesses in Southern Arizona. And I'm extremely dedicated to this community. I'm a fourth-generation Tucsonan, and I don't see myself ever living somewhere else, unless we run out of water completely, which I don't think is going to happen. I've been very engaged in workforce development and the entrepreneurial ecosystem for several decades. I was there at the beginning of Startup Tucson when it was just Justin Williams holding up a sign downtown that said, "We are an entrepreneurial ecosystem." And the point to that comment is, he was a champion for saying, "This is what we are, and we will become it," rather than hoping that would be it someday. And over the next 10 years, Startup Tucson became that nexus that we had all hoped it would be. UACI, with the University of Arizona Tech Parks, has also been around for many, many decades and has been a beacon for our community for developing technology companies, especially those of which, who were spun out of the university via Tech Launch Arizona. See how it all kinds of ties together a little bit there? Tech Launch Arizona does a lot of entrepreneurial activities and helps us get the technology out of the university. However, they are solely focused on the university and on faculty. And Startup Tucson has their own domain these days, which isn't quite as technology or maker-focused as maybe SATech could be. Something else that is important to note is that all of these organizations took a decade to gain momentum and truly become activated. It's a long, hard process, and it requires a lot of effort and a lot of investment. So I want to make clear to the, to the governing board and to the Pima administration, while although this is a very important endeavor and can be a true jewel and a community asset, it is a long-term investment, or it's probably not worth doing. It needs to be a long-term investment. It needs to be a long-term investment to get its head above water. It takes five to 10 years for startups to really gain momentum and really get going. It takes five to 10 years to truly build out brands and become a nexus of the community on these things. Now, I think SATech does, as Lydia's already mentioned, have a wonderful opportunity at the nexus between manufacturing, prototyping with the advanced manufacturing capabilities at the Pima Downtown Campus, along with accessibility to students who might not feel entirely comfortable going to an incubator that's housed in the University of Arizona, where almost everybody has a four-year technology degree. One of the main goals of Pima Community College is access and access to education. And this is something very special that SATech can provide, a lower barrier to entry to those who are interested in making, building, engaging in the trades, and perhaps even building companies that aren't on this Stanford, Yale, Bay Area Y Combinator pathway of go get your team of your four business school buddies, form a business plan, go and raise venture capital. We all know that that's not all of entrepreneurship. We all know that that's not actually what makes up most of our economy and most of our small businesses. This is the opportunity that SATech has to bring to our community, and I am 100% behind that. But I do ask that you guys really stand behind it as well, really have a long-term vision for it, and resource it appropriately so that it can truly be the gem that I see in my heart that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And I'd like to share a little bit about partnerships. With partners like AZ Tech Council, Optics Valley, Marcus Engineering, Advanced Marketing, Inventive Guild, our community volunteers. SATech is where ideas turn action, ideas into action for students and community. Our B2B Expo keynote, Melody Lewis, founder of Adisionist Community Collaborative, shared in their keynote address, Foundations of Relationship Building: Relationships Are Currency. Relationships are currency. And what does that mean? That means that sometimes one introduction is worth more than a check. A warm connection to a founder, company, a mentor, that's currency. A student's story. A student can have the best idea in the world, but without the right relationship, goes nowhere, or the right connection. And we can connect them to the right people. That's currency. That's impact. And I'm grateful for the belief people have in SATech, just like Patrick and others at our advisory committee. This slide shows the entrepreneur energy, the action, the synergy that's in SATech. And when you're in SATech and you're a part of these events, it's amazing the energy that comes to life in that space. It's a beautiful and successful opportunity for people to really enjoy, and I invite you all to be a part of it. Feedback from our attendees are, "What a great event. SATech delivered beyond expectations." It was our first expo, to have the first expo on a third floor of advanced manufacturing building of a downtown campus. Best networking expo ever, at least in Tucson. I made valuable connections, discovered local businesses. People went to other expos, but they had never connected and had that networking experience. And one person said, "I was seated at the right table, and these were the people I needed to connect with in my business." Had not had those connections before at other events. So what are the lessons learned? Running SATech has taught us a lot about operations, partnerships, what community really needs. We did, Sue and I did a lot of qualitative discussions. We talked with folks. We looked at where the gaps were. We saw where there were missing pieces and how we could fill those voids. We've learned the reality of infrastructure, lean teams, how to do more with less while keeping high quality. Validating community demand early has been key. It ensures our programs are useful, relevant, impactful. We've made strategic pivots. Smart automation with HubSpot. Really grateful for the approval to have automation. And leaning on partners and volunteers to help. An expo like a Business to Be Expo, we had over 10 to 15 volunteers, advisory committee, really help and support that, plus the two students. Because that is a big undertaking to have over 85 RSVPs and 68 people. That cannot be done by one person. That is just not possible. We're developing strong student pipelines is central. Our PCC learners move from the classroom, from launching their ideas at SATech. And this all ties back to the chancellor's goals in growing enrollment, supporting students, strengthening the community, and building a unified ecosystem that grows over time. So what are the opportunities ahead? We're expanding licensing recruitment, bringing more entrepreneurs into SATech. We're deepening PCC community connections, building strong bridges for students, faculty, and businesses. Our advisory committee keeps growing. I've invited and reached out to an AI educator to bring tech expertise to our entrepreneurs. We're pursuing external funding, fundraising, including bank corporate sponsors to strengthen programs and impact. To have bank and corporate sponsors really would reduce the barriers to all who attend, especially if we're charging for events. We do need to consider the demographics and with early startups, as well as those with small budgets. And if we charge, how much we charge, and does that deter people from attending our events? And we'll keep celebrating those success stories, showing how ideas turn into real outcomes. And people aren't just coming, they're returning. They're referring others to us. And that's how we know it works. It's holistic, it's organic, but it's happening, and people are coming to our space. What I'd like to show with you now is our lovely website. I know Carla had the chance of coming and to volunteer at the B2B Expo, and I had no idea you had this website. So I want to show everyone this beautiful website that I was delighted to share, that we, I created, designed, and worked with HubSpot, but also included two students to really help support in the design of these efforts. I wanted the students to contribute their own experiences. And you can see, you can go to the About page. There's an entrepreneurship section. There's an advisory committee section. There's the Growth Zone, which is our main area in SATech. And then there's the Events section, too. So if you click onto the Events, then you can see all the wonderful events that are happening. In fact, we have an open house coming soon with free pizza, thanks to Dean Wilson, who's providing the funding support for that as we don't have a budget for food. And so here we have where you can click on that, an RSVP, which is nice. And then in addition to that, we have the Tech Expo that is coming up on October 15th. And then we have Dream Builders. And then we have past events, too, that you can see all the different things that we have done in the past and how many events that have occurred, you know, just in a short time, less than a year. And we have support. In addition to contacts, there's a place where you can apply. So if people are interested in coming to SATech, we refer them to apply online. Some people don't like that process, but we do need them to apply. That's how we track our metrics, which is really important to us. As you see, there's opportunity for residents, membership, and prototyping services. In addition to a Donate button, so if people are interested, then they can also donate as well. Okay, so Nestor... Oh, here we go. And I can go back, so. Okay. And so as Guy Raz reminds us, "A business doesn't sell products or services, it sells an experience." I started with my own story, what it felt like to flounder without a clear path. SATech was built so our students, entrepreneurs, don't have to flounder. It's a place where ideas become action, connections turn into opportunities, but it doesn't grow on its own. Imagine SATech three years from now. What support, resources, time, talent, treasures does it need to get us there? Think about that for a moment. And I invite you all to show up at our events, talk about SATech in the rooms you sit in, open doors to partners, funders, companies. Let's have our programs underwritten by banks and corporate sponsors. That is the best practice at many incubators throughout the country. And, you know, let's make this building a bridge between students, entrepreneurs, and our regional economy. SATech is an experience of entrepreneurships right here at Pima Community College. Who serves our Pima Community Colleges in this space? I had a conversation with the University of Arizona. If you are not a University of Arizona student, you do not get to utilize their services. So who serves our community college students? Who serves our trades? That is us here at Pima Community College. And SATech is an entrepreneurship center serving community college students and the trades. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Sure, Taylor. Thank you for the excellent presentation. I obviously became aware of SATech as I ran for this position. But how does a broader community... How are we marketing this to the broader community?
Yes, so currently, we have HubSpot, which is an email process. We also have online, which we're utilizing a lot, and then word of mouth. I do have a vision of our lovely buses, that it would say Entrepreneurship SATech Center. Well, I saw Innovation today would be great. But right now, we do not have any mass marketing or marketing dollars that I'm aware of. So it really is a very, how would you say, holistic approach. Grassroots, grassroots, thank you. It's the grassroots efforts, me hitting the pavement, me talking to people, and me sending out emails and getting people's web information, emails, that I'm aware of. And I know Sue's done a good job when she's on the community as well, talking to folks. That's why I'm asking people, when you go to places, you know, talk with people at your tables, your events.
And then as a follow-up, it sounds like you're very lean but mean. If, you know, if there's an influx of folks coming in, is there a plan to how we would be able to respond to more demand?
You know, with one person, that's a bit of a challenge. If I'm in a meeting, I had a couple people come. They wanted to see me and hold in. Thankfully, we have a temp admin. Had to let them know, she's in a meeting, she's not able to see you. And so they ended up leaving. But with Sue and other people there, hopefully, the SBDC and other folks will be able to greet people in the space.
Of course, right, we anticipate growth over time. And we will obviously have to look at staffing patterns and resource allocation across this area and others that are growing, whereas others might not be, just to ensure that as we grow over time that we're providing the correct staffing levels.
I said I had 100 questions, and I have 98 left. I actually want to say that all of my questions were answered throughout the presentation. So congratulations, great job told of you.
We were trying to read your mind, Vice Chair Morales.
I appreciate that, yeah. But I actually, in all seriousness, and in all seriousness, I am biased. But I have to tell you, I think that you guys have a phenomenal team, not just with Lydia and Sue, but your advisory board. I honestly believe that if you have a spokesperson, you need to use Dr. Marcus, because he speaks with such passion and such commitment to the work that he's doing in entrepreneurship. And he knows what he's doing. He's done it time and time again. So congratulations on your advisory board. And Lydia, I want to tell you, you talked about your lean but mean approach. I've seen you several times in different meetings. I've had the great pleasure of collaborating with SATech through the Tech Council. And I've seen you in meetings, take lead. One example in particular is with the Arizona Commerce Authority. I've been trying to expand that relationship with Pima Community College, and you took the lead. You took the bull by the horns and said, "We can do this." And I appreciate that. I appreciate your commitment to the work that you're doing with entrepreneurship and incubating, and really business development, which equates to economic development for a region. So again, congratulations, and thank you so much for everything that you, your team, and everybody on the advisory board is doing.
I just, oops, sorry. Go ahead, pause. Every time I think of the cool things that we're doing over in that building, it is a place of excitement and growth and opportunity. And I just, I think that that's really an amazing thing, because I've never really experienced those intense feelings in, not in my math classes, right? I mean, I know there's opportunity, right, down the road. But I just thank you for all the efforts and the work that you're doing with Rebecca Ursule. She was one of our board, the student, yeah, member to our board. And if that's the kind of caliber and quality of people that you have in your center, that's such an amazing thing. So thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right. Dr. Rourke, any closing remarks or anything, or are we all set?
Thank you for your questions this evening regarding both Pima Online as well as SATech. Should any further questions arise in your mind that didn't come out this evening, feel free to just let us know. We're excited about both of these initiatives, and we'll continue to support each of them. Also like to thank the chancellor for his support for Pima Online and SATech as well, as well as the whole innovation concept under workforce development. And also just would like to thank the team members for their presentations this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Rourke.
Can I say one more quick thing? And I'm glad, you don't have to stand there, Ian. I actually wanted to say that I congratulated all of the team, but I really do want to congratulate both Provost Rourke and the chancellor. It's hard to talk to you when you're not here, Chancellor, by the way. It's really awkward. I forget that you're up there somewhere. But I do want to thank you for the support that you...
Believe me, Mad Vice Chair, I can't stand it. I wish I was there, but thank you.
I'm sure. But I do want to say thank you for the support that you give both of these programs, because they're so critical, and both you and their provost. I love to see how engaged and supportive you guys are to these programs. And I, again, I will speak with my bias. I appreciate the support for Tate SATech because it involves economic development and entrepreneurship, specifically in the area of technology. So thank you both.
Chancellor Nasty, is there anything else you wanted to add before we move on from 3.2?
No, just echo the thanks for all the people that showed up today. And I loved what everyone had to say, the students, the people that are using SATech. Lydia, just amazing job, so impressive. And I really appreciate what Dr. Marcus said, right? It's very new. SATech is less than a year old, and they're already doing some remarkable things. And obviously, we hope to see that impact grow over time. So very much appreciate all of the board's support and the community's support for that project.
Thank you, Chancellor. So just so everybody knows, before we move on to 3.3, assuming we pass a motion to go into executive session, we're not planning to come back here. So I don't know if anybody wanted to, like, spend the rest of your evening with us, but you don't need to. We're not coming back to this room. So please, you know, spend time with your families or whatever other obligations you have this evening. And with that, I will move to go to executive session, if there's a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to executive session. Thank you all.